I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Frank Claypool?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Sarah Furley?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Here.
Steve Oakes?
Here.
Mayor, before we begin, I'd like to request to make an amendment to the agenda tonight.
Before we begin, I'm going to say a few things. So before we get started, I'm going to set some rules of order for our meeting moving forward. I should be firmer in these meetings, and the rules for the meetings will start with respectful conversations. This is a mayor council from the government, therefore, the council will be raising their hand and asked to speak. And this will help with how the speaking out business is going on and the interrupting. When legislation is read, the mayor will ask for a motion. And if there's a second, then the mayor will ask for discussion, and then roll call is taken. No interruption should occur during this time. And if there is a motion and no second, then that motion fails. The mayor will recognize speakers when on the agenda. We'll also have a sign up sheet, which you know is outside the door. I place that for citizens to sign up to speak. They will address the mayor and council with their name, address, and topic of conversation or concern. There will be no negative comments towards our elected officials or negative upsetting things about your neighbors. It should be for business that the city council and mayor should know about. Any disrespectful, profane, or out of order speaking, the Sergeant Warms will be asked to remove the person from the room. If it occurs two times, then we're going to have to ban them from the meetings. The meetings are just, have gotten to be not existent. I'm removing ordinance number eight to the agenda at present time. I am sure it will be discussed further. Excuse me, we have KRS rules and a resolution three from 2011 that's in place. And the states that residents should sign up at noon on Friday before the Monday of the meetings. And we will also act in parliamentary and Robert's rule procedures, which the cities all widely use. All the cities widely use. I would like to address resolution seven that Sarah had emailed all of us about. And it's not on the agenda for advice of the attorney. And he had written each council person on it, or Sarah, I believe. The reason for seven was clarifying number six, but it added a lot of changes as well. And the city is now threatened with litigation on this matter and needs to be discussed only in executive session. There will be no discussion on it, and it is not on the agenda and will not be read. We are not going to catch who saw or who didn't see Sarah in the room. This is an issue with the stating "I'm leaving in the middle of an action." This is an ethical issue, I believe, and this should be addressed in the future. May this cause much dissension, confusion, and drama in our city. As for the Z21 issue, the RM density was removed prior to the KCPC meeting. So any future changes for that site, for the density change, will go through a map amendment. I think everyone wanted that. Let's move forward as neighbors, colleagues, and get on with business. Let's stop demonizing your opposition. And that way, we can get good business done instead of arguing about something that's old. I would like to share right now also and take the time to extend to all our veterans, a thanks and of appreciation for their service to our city. Veterans Day is tomorrow, and we really appreciate that.
Are there any veterans present here tonight? Stand up, please, so we can.
There's a lot of my feet happening here. Your approval of the minutes? Let everybody get a piece of whatever they have.
I still wanted to at least attempt to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda. I wanted to include the consideration of resolution number seven, 2025, which is a corrective resolution that addresses resolutions four, five, and six from earlier this year and the related September 29 meeting minutes. This resolution that I drafted, and I think I've shared a few times, it doesn't change anything in the Z21 process that's already moving forward. It simply makes sure that our legislative record matches what council actually approved and moved forward with, with the Kenton County Planning Commission. So my goal is for this documentation to just get everything in order for the city.
It does also change minutes which are not allowed in the same reservation. And it's not on the agenda, so.
Well, I'm asking.
And the fact that we have litigation that's threatened, I don't think we're going to talk about it until we have an executive session.
I would still like to at least attempt to make a change to the agenda.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second that. Mr. Oakley? Oh, do you want to run this way? Are we voting? We're voting.
Voting? I mean, no.
That's right.
Sorry, I think I won the roll. Ms. Cardesi?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
No.
Mr. Claypool?
No.
And Ms. Sayers?
Yes.
And Ms. Frelick?
Yes.
It's not going on the agenda, so we're going to move on with our approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 13th.
I'll second that.
I do have some changes to these minutes, if I could. And I don't want to be picky here, but I'll just throw a few things in. On page four, under the Parks and Recreation Report, under numbers three and four, it said old bushes were removed and replaced. They just will be replaced. And the flower beds, instead of were, will be made the same size. Dan's working as fast as he can, but we're getting there, right, Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
On page five, this is where things get a little complicated, but they're important. Right above the section where it says "Motion to adjourn" was made, it says, "Mr. Braun referred back to Ms. Spoor's veiled threat." So this is what it should say, instead of alleged threat. I called it a veiled threat, which he noted included a similar threat to himself. He stated that such threats will not be tolerated. Then in the final, oh, that's it, goes around here.
I just wanted to note that city attorney Dan Braun arrived at 6:02 PM. And then in, let's see here, this is on the first page, in the very long paragraph, that's sort of in the middle, and almost in the middle of that paragraph, where it says, "She stated that she had written a letter," it should be an email. And then on page four, I just wanted to correct the spelling of Ms. Sayers' name. In page four, section four, letter A, under Economic Development and Business, to Ms. Sayer. Have a block.
Anybody else? Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Ms. Sayers?
Yes.
Ms. Frelick?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Cardesi?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Minutes from October 27th? Motion to approve? Josh Starkey? Steve was first. Any changes?
I do have some changes. Does somebody else want to go first? Do you want to go first with changes? Anybody?
I can go first if you want.
Your call, I have a few. On the first page, middle of the paragraph under section one, it begins "Based on the July 29th memo, new sentence that repeals the flawed Resolution Five, which was adopted without a quorum." That should say "in her opinion."
I believe that's what I stated, though.
Well, I figured the whole paragraph was in "in her opinion," which I.
Well, we should note that, though, because I don't want it to read like it's a fact. Then going down in that same paragraph, third line up, it says, "She asked a further note than on," I think that was October 21st.
It was, yeah.
Okay. Then on page two, after the roll call, the paragraph begins Ms. Spoor. You go down about five lines. It starts "any sort of development," and then it says, "She agrees with appealing," but that should say "repealing" Resolution Five. In the next full paragraph, the last sentence says, "Everyone received a copy of the memo," in which it should say, "everyone, including those attending, received a copy of the memo," to which Ms. Spoor is referring. In the next paragraph, I just want this made clear, and Sarah, you might want to phrase this more explicitly, but we did go through every single item in that memo. And Laura was able to address publicly and confirm what was in her motion and what was not. Each of those items were addressed, and she was able to certify that the terms of her motion were met and that was publicly discussed. So I just want it made clear, and I can give you more precise language if you want.
I think that would be helpful, yeah.
I'll be happy to do that, but we did go through it line by line. The exceptions were publicly addressed, one at a time, to certify that they complied with Ms. Cardosi's motion. There were, to be specific, and we discussed this at our last meeting, three exceptions relating to the RM zone, all of which were removed, taken back. There were a few environmental issues in there, including hillside clearing restrictions, et cetera, that remained.
But the issue was that it was not public.
That's why we did it at the last meeting. We went publicly through the memo, and everybody had an opportunity to look at the memo. We should put the memo on our website if it's not on there, but it was addressed, each item publicly. And those were my only comments.
After the fact, though, after the fact, I think that's important.
Yeah, but we did it because it's important, because I think people were, and I know this isn't part of the minutes discussion. I don't want to get, but I didn't want people misled into thinking there was some weird secret stuff in the memo. I want everybody to know what was in there and that each item was addressed.
We handed it around.
We did, we handed copies out, yeah. Okay, those are my only comments.
Yeah, I guess I'll come back to that in a moment. I had some suggestions as well. So on page two, after the large middle paragraph where it ends with "status quo," I'd like to add a line where Ms. Frelick asked if we needed a motion to have a discussion at that point. And I think, since we're on that page, the paragraph that begins with, "Ms. Frelick asked what Ms. Spoor was referring to when she said we were going back." I think that paragraph is accurate, and I don't think that it was about the going line by line. I think it was more about trying to make sense of the resolution number six. So I'd like to leave it as is. And then on page three, after the second paragraph that ends with "everything in the resolution," I'd like to add the line that Ms. Spoor called the question. And then sort of in the middle of the.
Excuse me, Sarah, where?
I'm sorry, page three, after the second paragraph that ends with "everything in the resolution."
Okay.
And I did verify all of this by video, in case anybody is curious. Then in the last paragraph before the motion to adjourn, sort of in the middle of that, there's a sentence that begins with, "Mayor Zembrode stated that this resolution." I'd like to add a line there that Ms. Frelick stated that the tie break wasn't appropriate. And I, oh, I forgot, I have one tiny thing on the very first page. There's an "i," the "i" in meeting is transposed on the very top line. I know, that's exciting.
Where is that?
Just on the very first page in the top.
It's just got an extra. It's the "i." It's the key in the "i."
It's in there. There's some order.
Okay, the only thing, question I have, Ms. Spoor made changes to her minutes in the paragraph that Ms. Frelick asked to retain the same. Now, I don't know what we're voting on, because you guys are both wanting something different there, so.
I do think we went line by line through the exceptions, and they were publicly addressed.
I would defer to Ms. Cardosi.
I believe that's true, but it didn't happen in the timeline. I would like to have it happen, should have happened during the meeting in August.
But it did happen in our last meeting, and these are the minutes for our last meeting. So we're not talking about the minutes from August. We're talking about what happened in our last meeting.
I'm not sure if that was very clear. I mean, I.
I think it was very clear, and it was done to address concerns, both Laura's concerns and.
We pass it around to everyone, so maybe we can add it to the minutes.
Well, I would just like the minutes from that meeting to reflect that we did go line by line through the memo and address each item in there.
I think it would be helpful if it was clear, like if you knew exactly where that was in the timeline, because this section is a statement that I made. It's not about going through line by line. So I would not like to change that because it's something that was part of the record.
Well, we could add a new paragraph, then, that says, "Ms. Spoor went line by line through the memo, publicly addressing each item and confirming with Ms. Cardosi whether or not they were in her motion."
Again, I think that that's something that you and Laura can discuss, because to be.
It's something we all have to vote on, so we got to talk about it.
I understand, but I think it's.
I mean, it happened, you agree it happened, Laura, I mean.
I agree that conversation happened.
Yeah, I mean, I just want that conversation to be part of our minutes. And I just want it to be part of our minutes because I'm trying to quell these rumors that secret things are going on, and it's really damaging for our city. It's important, and I agree with Laura, it would have been better to do it in August.
Yes.
Somehow it was overlooked, but better late than never. And we go through it, and everybody knows what's in there and what's not in there and what went forward to the Z21 and what did not. And I said at the last meeting, it's very important to me that this be accurately recorded because the environmental issues that did go forward is something we have talked about for years, and I put a lot of effort into making sure those are in there. So what did not go forward were only the things pertaining to the RM zones. I think we, line by line, done and made it very clear. I just, separate paragraph, as I just said.
Mayor, I do recall that when we went line by line, we handed some of the sheets out to the people so they could follow, so they could follow along.
Correct.
I remember that, so that's my personal.
If we're going to, I agree that if we're going to change it to add a separate paragraph, but if we are going to add that separate paragraph, do we need to highlight the reason that it is there? If we were to read this five years from now, would we know the reason that we had that second paragraph and went line by line is because it wasn't done correctly in August? Does that line mean?
I'm not sure I said that at the time. I'm not sure.
I'm just asking.
I'm not sure.
I have a proposal. Since what I like to do when I'm going through the minutes, if I have a suggestion, I always go back to the video to check it. How about, I can make a motion that we table this until our next meeting so we can figure out exactly where that goes.
Review the voting. Everybody reviews the video?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
First, you table the minutes.
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Ms. Sayers?
Yes.
Ms. Frelick?
Yes.
Ms. Spoor?
Yes.
Ms. Cardesi?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
So sort of in the spirit of possibly better late than ever, but hi, I'm Jim Fowler, resident of 829 Aberdeen Road since 1992. Thank you for an opportunity once again to speak to you about development and its impact on the green spaces in Park Hills. We last spoke in August of 2023 and discussed the opportunity in preserving the green space behind the 1500 Dixie Highway property. In the past decade, there has been a lot of passionate discussion and some proposals about what to do in Park Hills to conserve our green spaces, including the Trolley Line, Hamilton Road Hillside, and the Audubon Forest. I recall yard signs we saw throughout our city urging leaders to protect the integrity of Park Hills. Many on this council and in our city supported attempts to protect the Audubon Forest. Unfortunately, development of Wald Court left us with a small consolation now called Audubon Preserve because the council didn't have a chance to vote for it or against it. We once again are faced with difficult choices about the future and the preservation of green space in Park Hills. Possibly this time, however, there is still time to influence this outcome. The development of 1500 Dixie and the Sejuan Garden properties will remove most of the trees in this forest, and therefore, an opportunity to conserve another city-owned green space. Again, this time, it's not too late to act. Suggesting that this property be zoned for multifamily housing is a disservice to residents who have pursued efforts to preserve Park Hills. Shouldn't we all be continuing our efforts to protect our green spaces? The Z21 zoning has progressed through the KCPC, identifying several areas in Park Hills as CO, conservancies. It's a great step forward in conserving our green spaces. I'd like to ask council to consider another city-owned property, that of 1500 Dixie Highway. There has long been a desire to have a park public space closer to the residents of the southeast side of Dixie Highway. We discussed this several times in the Beautification Committee. This forest and green space behind the 1500 Dixie building could be a good option. Think for a moment how this green space could be used by our residents. A path, a place at gardens. Perhaps this would also lead to increased foot traffic in our business district. You did not get a chance to vote for or against the Wald Court development, and we lost most of that forest today, and soon you have a choice. You can use your vote to preserve the green space that Park Hills owns and conserve for our residents, or you can enable developers to clear cut this green space and lose the opportunity to conserve. I urge you to vote for zoning map amendments that will conserve 1500 Dixie Highway. Thank you very much.
That's the job. Hi. I do want to clarify a couple of things. And the Wald Court, that was owned by the developers that did that. And in the settlement agreement, we did get the fourth thousand, because they were going to build on that, too. So that was, anything that's not city-owned, you know, we don't really have a whole lot of control.
Exactly, couldn't vote on.
Right.
You have no choice.
I just wanted.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification.
That was like not a closing.
And I'm sure you all probably know this, but what Mr. Fowler is talking about, the property directly behind the Sejuan is not sitting in. That's private property. And in our Z21 going forward, because those RM things, which is the townhouse zoning, is taken out, it leaves that as a single-family or duplexes are permitted there. I think it's R1FF zone, so it would stay that way. So I just want to.
But the city.
I wish the city owned that, but we don't.
The city owns.
Behind 1500, we own, but we do not own that part.
It has not been sold.
No, that's the city's property.
We do have a little bit of the access issue. That's why Chief done parking back there.
Foot traffic works, though.
Stevenson's not here, no? Nobody actually.
Mr. Brayce has his hand up. I do have a sign up out on the outside door.
I sent something in. Okay.
Okay, just so you know.
Matt Brayce, Alhambra. I was just wondering what is going on with the double yellow lines at the end of Amsterdam? Because there's a straight, and then there's a curve, and if you pull up to the stop sign, you're over the double lines. And today, this is the second time in the morning, I've almost got hit because people cut that corner so bad.
They do cut it.
Are we changing something there, or is that, well, then why is there two sets of double lines?
Dan, can you address that?
Yes, it was requested because people were coming up out of Covington and shaving that line, because people were coming to the stop sign. So it's 11 feet, 3 inches off the curb, follows the radius of the curb. So there's people coming up out of Covington, they have some guideline.
So we're supposed to stay on the yellow, on the curbside now, then? Like, we haven't really fit somewhere anymore.
No, there's no such thing as a perfect remedy. We did the best we could.
Can we remove the straight ones, then, and leave?
Well, because if somebody's moving straight and you make a left-hand turn up on you, there's, you know, go across the top yellow.
The white line crosses the yellow. So if you're observing going down the hill and you see the white line, the yellow line coming straight into you, so your right, excuse me, your left bumper could be hit.
Yeah, like this morning, somebody get, they cut that corner so bad that they follow that yellow line.
I'll get the chief to look at it, and we'll take care of that.
That's safe.
Maybe how about an engineer swig up there?
For rights, that several accidents in persons because of not that guideline. Get people some reference as to where they should or should not be.
Who told you? Either the mayor, the district, or the city.
Or the construction committee.
We did ask Kenton County to, at Covington, to put something down below that to kind of direct the people coming up Lewis to stay. But there's always like a message.
So, Mayor, so Chief will look at that and come up with a solution or a change or. So, Mayor, so Chief will look at that and come up with a solution or a change or?
Because I, I have my, my down there, so.
I have, yeah, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I had this on my list for, I think probably Dan's report, just to ask about it, because, you know, I, I always defer to things that are, you know, part of the federal highway plan, and I just want to make sure that we're in compliance.
Right.
With whatever's there.
And, and I do agree with Mr. Breeze, it's a dangerous meeting point there.
I feel like the, the curve kind of makes people want to cut it farther more.
Yeah, you could be right. I know I've almost been hit there in both directions. I've almost been hit coming down Montague to turn in and coming down Amsterdam. So it's just, it's a dangerous intersection.
Is this, okay.
We, we've run this up before, got together to try to solve a problem down there, but I'm sorry.
Would it be something we could ask Jay?
Yeah, maybe Jay should. Right, but he. Okay, infrastructure, and Dan was involved in the infrastructure, so that's why I asked.
We're trying to resolve the people cutting the corner.
Yeah, it's clever, it's the design of the whole intersection span.
Yeah, we'll get rid of them, so that's, I don't want to cause more problems.
Right.
So move on to, um. I'm sorry. You're Dan, right?
Yes, that's correct.
You did, you did say that, and I was looking for a list, but I didn't have a list today.
Gotcha. Before we start, so, anyway, I'm Dan Lutz, I live at 836 Alhambra Court. I've lived here since 2008 with my wife. At the beginning, you said that ordinance number eight was not going to be discussed during this agenda?
No, we, I've moved on.
Okay, so there's no point in me saying what I'm going to say?
No, we're, we'll have further discussion.
Okay.
If you, your free speech.
Okay, well, since I'm here. So anyway, I emailed the council and the mayor about paragraph E3A and ordinance eight. Just to paraphrase for everybody in here, it, it has to do with signing up to speak for residents. So it says, any person wishing to address the council basically needs to contact the clerk by 3:00 PM the Friday before the meeting. And that's up to the mayor's discretion whether people can, can or can't speak. And then also to add, you know, basically give a summary of what you're going to speak about. So I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. And from, just from emails back and forth with councilmen, council, council people and the mayor, I understood that, you know, this regulation has been in effect since 2011, so about 14 years. And actually, it did get a little bit better this time that the timeframe, the cutoff went from noon until 3:00. So, and I'm not bringing this up as a complaint or as an accusation of anyone preventing anyone speaking during council meetings. I know that you've been flexible for me twice now in the past on this, and to the best of my knowledge, nobody's been denied the permission to speak. But I guess my, my question is, is, you know, what's the, what's the purpose of having, having this ordinance if it's not really enforced? And as a follow-up to that, what happens to us as residents when someone does decide to enforce it? And my concern is that, and I don't know if there's a history of it or not, but if we went by this 3:00 PM deadline, the agenda wasn't posted on the Park Hills City webpage, not the neighborhood group, until around 2:00 PM. So that would only leave people an hour to make, to make a decision.
Dan, the reason was, I had checked with other cities, and I know in Fort Mitchell, you have to call like Wednesday.
Right.
Far before the, the Monday meeting. But you can sign up, you can ask to speak when you come, and you know, if there's time in the meeting, you're, I've never denied anyone.
No, and I, again, I'm not saying that you did.
Council, I don't think they were either. But there's a sign up sheet, I have on the thing, we, Julie and I came up with the sign up sheet.
Okay.
So you can always sign up when you get here, and then we can, if we have time, if we have a big full agenda, like budget time or something like that, it might be different, but when we don't have a.
Okay, so is that sign up sheet new tonight?
Yeah, it's out there.
Okay.
Sorry.
So that's kind of my concern here is that depending, depending on what happens, if, if you or someone else, a future mayor or anybody decides to enforce this rule, there's no, there's no balance that protects the resident. So my suggestion would be if, if that, if that rule is going to stay in place, like just to protect us, us as residents, there needs to be something in there that states the agenda should be posted by, say, like close of business Thursday. That at least gives people 24 hours. Or, just to keep things simple, I mean, we spent, I'm not sure how much time going through, like discussing details in minutes, like let's just keep it simple and get rid of that, that E3A section altogether, and then just have the sign up sheet with a five-minute limit.
And those things will all be discussed when it's brought back up, probably by the, at a later day when we have time for.
Okay. Yeah, that's my thoughts, and again, like I said, I, I'm not aware of anybody being denied, I've not been denied, it's not meant to be an accusation, but the thing with rules is when, when push comes to shove and people start going into rules and start enforcing them, you know, you got, you got to be careful what's in there and, and protect yourself.
Yeah, and as I said to you, Dan, when I responded to your email, I think the point of having protocols for a meeting is to serve the residents.
Right.
So that not just the loudest voices get heard, but everybody has a chance to speak, you know, that there's an order and a process there that should facilitate our communication.
Right.
And I think your points are well taken, I think we should talk about those. But the idea of any protocol should be to make things more open, more efficient, and more available to everybody.
No, I agree, I mean, that's, that's my life and my job is protocols, I work in aviation, so.
Then you understand why they.
So yes, so that's why I wanted to bring it up, that like, you know, if, if somebody does start reading and start looking, I want to make sure that, you know, the residents of the city have something that protects them in case.
Yeah, you, you came up with some good ideas, and we work, we work for the city, everybody in the city.
Right.
Even though maybe some people are not happy with all our decisions, but we have to look for everybody in the city, but you came up with some really good ideas. I think we really could do some homework on that. Appreciate you coming up.
Especially in terms of, of future, you know, future meetings. Your point's so well taken from you with, we don't know who's going to be mayor in 20 years. And that person could be like, mm, this is how we do it, and that just cuts off a whole bunch of people. We're also making the assumption that people just know these rules, know where to find them, know where to look. I think that, like, the sign up sheet and doing that, having that to me is enough, so I think that's also a point well taken.
Right, and it seems to work pretty well for the, the planning, the planning, Kent County Planning Commission that went to you on the sixth. They had a sign up sheet and asked probably honestly too many times if anybody wanted to speak, so, but it, you know, everything seemed to go well, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something that kind of, I don't know, builds on what you were saying too, is that, you know, the resolution from 2011, I think it's a, a good point for us to really, you know, repeal that and incorporate that information, whatever it ends up being, into our code by ordinance, because right now, residents wouldn't know that rule without coming to us.
Yeah, and I think all cities have protocols on how their meetings are conducted, and I think a short, clean ordinance is the best way to go on that.
In that vein, is it possible to create like a subcommittee of maybe three members of council to kind of come up with an ordinance?
Caucus about it, because the whole reason was to bring it up is to consolidate it in one spot.
Right.
Last year, it was brought up to do just that, and then.
But if we had three people working on it, it wouldn't be a quorum, and then they could bring that to the caucus meeting for discussion.
Well, we'll talk about that as well.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Our attorney had a family medical emergency today, so it was kind of a legsman thing, he was in charge, so he's not here to read. Our municipal order number 16, this is to municipal order appointing James R. Isaacs as full-time police officer of the city of Park Hills Police Department. Because we have a vacancy, it's recommended the chief's family fill that vacancy with, um, R. Isaacs, would you like to follow us about him? Everybody usually.
I know, so I work with the Covington Police Department. He retired from Covington, so he worked for the Little Police Department. He's familiar with his work ethic, he built a good job, and came here highly motivated, he wanted to come here. I'm comfortable with it, he's an experienced officer, he's retired, so I think it's the best candidate for the job.
Sarah.
I didn't know that we had a vacancy of this nature.
Uh, Brian Dewey.
Okay.
He designed it, he was now working for Camel County Police Department.
Okay, okay.
So do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Discussion or roll call?
Um, Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Cardaci.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Cardaci.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
The department reports, Chief.
Anybody had an opportunity to report a motion?
Yes. Steve, yes, I'll, I know you.
Family issue.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Sorry, sorry, I shouldn't. Okay. I just have, it's always a data question with me, right? And maybe, you know, Steve can maybe address this later too, because I think he was working on this, but I'm always wondering when I look at the, at the speed and vehicle counts, if we're studying or if there's any plan to study the data so that we can see like where the increases are and, you know, figure out, you know, what the information is between these dates, because you know, I can look at the speed data, you know, and see where, what you've highlighted so nicely. Right, and also like the total, and then what the average speed, like we can look at all those things, but when I look at it each month, I'm like, oh, okay, I see that, but then I, you know, going back, I would have to like dig through all of my different packets from various months to be able to compare, like, has the total vehicle count increased? You know, I'm not sure, it would be nice to be able to see, see those trends. So I think we talked about that at one point.
Right, I'll have Steve, because he's, I know he's worked with Dan as well as the reports. And getting compiled some information, like what streets.
I went to an infrastructure meeting, I think it was last month, and he did pull up some data, I think that was provided by you, Chief.
The website, I provided them with the website.
Okay, and, and it was pretty interesting, you, yeah, you might want to look at those.
I had a chance to look at them with the chief once a while ago, but then I was told not to do that again.
I just have, I love what you said, but my mind immediately goes to, you know, I work in education, there's always a bandwidth issue. We don't have enough people to do all of the things, and you know, you have all of your other duties assigned. I think what you said is important, would that be something that could fall within like infrastructure, or is there a safety committee? Because to me, those are actionable things that they could review and report on.
That's why.
On a regular basis, but is that where it falls, is under infrastructure?
Okay.
Like, I, I think that would be a really, I'm not telling Steve how to run his committee, but that could be like an actionable thing. I mean, we have all this data that the chief provides, and they could review that on a monthly basis via part of their report out, and we could start identifying those trends.
Anything else on, Chief reports? Do you want to, Chief, bring it?
Actually, I got five.
Glad we're making a chance to see my report, 33 calls for service for the month of October. We did assist Ludlow with a fire on Alberta Street. The, both pumps received pump testing and PM service, so everything was good, it all passed. And we did get our new car in service, it's outside, if anybody wants to take a look later, I know it's cold out, but looks pretty good. And we had good weather this year for Halloween, and we ended up giving out over 700 hot dogs.
Wow, well, that's a good, that's a good statistic to know.
First time it hasn't rained in a while, so everybody showed up, so.
See any trends, I feels like I really have.
Was it the most ever?
No, no, they, I mean, there's, years ago, it was like a thousand, I knew we'd always get a thousand, so it's kind of, kind of dropped off a little bit over the years, but we're, we're slowly getting back up there again, so I think COVID kind of hurt us, but we're.
I don't know, carloads coming and kids are popping out all the time.
We had a few. Yes, sir.
I've heard a lot of great comments about that again, and you guys just do absolutely a great job. If I remember right, it started in 1954.
Yes, sir.
Excuse my, I'm a little hoarse tonight, but once again, you guys do a great job, a lot of people have just taken the death of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You and all the department, appreciate it.
I got a hot dog.
It was good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks.
Greetings, Mayor Zumbro, from the council, thanks for another month. Big changes happening in Park Hills, St. Joseph Heights is officially down and done. A demolition contractor is moving out equipment daily, just an FYI, and who knows what's going to happen next and when. But that's big, big change right there. We got a lot of paint down recently, about 25 to 30 gallons, unfortunately, Mother Nature said we're finished for the season, especially with the snow we got this morning, that was kind of a kicker. But anyway, we did manage to switch back to the yellow and got the far end of Montague and Amsterdam, which was questioned before. And then up at Old State and Sleepy Hollow, extended that double yellow for safety concerns and improvements up there. Also extended, no, yeah, I said that one. I will be, start, starting leaf pickup Wednesday. Mother Nature said, I need to get busy with that too, so. Anyway, once again, just a little reminder that the curb leaves need to be at the back of the curb and not in the street. Thank you very much for that one. And now for the pumpkin parade and hayride update, the fun part of my report. A huge success in my opinion, not sure how many people participated in the pumpkin parade. Thanks to many for your help, residents decorating along the trolley tracks. My son Nick for driving the other tractor, and Debbie for counting the 115 riders and the 10 trips that we made. And also to Ms. Cardosi and her husband Beau for dressing up again this year, I think it's what, the third, fourth year?
Third year.
Yeah, that's pretty nice.
It's fine, I wish we could get more people to do that, I think that'd be really fun, if a lot of people came with costumes and sit along the path.
What, what are you guys?
Oh, we were pirates, yeah, yeah.
Everybody recognized you this year. Last year, it was like, no. Any, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, actually, I could save this for old business, but I wanted to just follow up on the St. Joseph Heights and see what, what news, if there's anything for next steps.
I am finalized their whole agreement, yeah, I was going to say that right after that, but, yeah.
Yeah, even one of the employees from Rourke gas, I mentioned about all the seed installed they put down. Well, due to erosion control and everything like that, they have to put something down to keep it from eroding, so who knows what's going to happen next. They have to put that down. Yes, sir.
I got, you know, once again, great job, you know, we always, you know, the police department, fire department, yourself, you know, everybody on council puts their fair share in there for the city, but civic association, everything they do for this wonderful city, they don't get talked about enough.
Well, yeah, I apologize for that.
Well, no, no, no.
Well, no, I mean, they are the spirit of the.
Exactly.
Pumpkin parade and hayrides, so I forgot to mention.
Saying, and Easter, they do a lot of really good stuff.
Speaking of which, that's coming up here soon.
That's a good thing to bring up.
Well.
Christmas in the park.
I've been a resident, resident for over 40-something years, and I started in the civic association, and it's just a great organization. We are so blessed and admire our city, so.
Thanks for reminding me. I'm.
Sorry for my froggy voice.
That's all right, no, I can't remember everything, I tried to keep it short and sweet, and anyway, I'm going to sit down.
Dan, you okay?
I, I pull that out all the time, because I know someone who all get away.
She put fairy lights on there.
That's a good idea, though. Just to follow up, I'm sorry, I'm, just to follow up on what Greg said, just to get it out there, December 14th is Luminary Night, just, everybody remember? just to get it out there, December fourteenth is luminary night, just everybody remember, Santa will be in Trolley Park for all the kids and, uh, there'll be horse carriage rides and the whole thing, December fourteenth.
And help out, um, I don't know if I got it, it's in my mind, I apologize, uh, Baron Crawford with the trains.
Oh, thank you, Greg.
The same night as.
The city day, that means you can go to Behringer Crawford Museum for free, bring your kids, your grandkids, for free on December fourteenth. We always tie into our luminary night and that, that we have, at the museum, it's the white Christmas display, which is really nice, the costumes from the original movie, and the train display is great, I mean, everybody loves that.
I have a question, we used to, um, usually approve like a payment that we made for that, because the city would pay for it, do we still do that? Is that still how that works?
I think it's.
Is it in the budget still?
I think so. It's in the park budget.
Yeah, I, I think when they pick the date, when we approve on that, uh, it should be, so. Early, isn't it, early in the year?
They usually line it up early because all the cities do it. But we usually choose our luminary night as our date, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that's available to you.
Jay Bear isn't here, so I'll give Jay's report. We met, in my talk on, um, the twenty-second, and Steve Alpitz was there, public works, Dan and myself, and we discussed a lot of the luminary plans on the bus stop and then the continuation. And the continuation past the bus stop is really, really expensive, because the state wants us to put a new catch base and they had all these requirements, and it was up in the over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we kind of backed off of that and we're, we're, we did all agree that the bus stop was in our price range, so we said, so we're doing the bus stop and that's what they're working on. He's applied for, let's call it a pink question permit with the state, so when we get that back, then we can move on from there and get some, he's going to get some estimates on, you know, uh, work to be done. We're going to extend the pan out and, you know, make it way safer, so it'll be about probably ten foot, but maybe, I think maybe one of that, maybe twelve feet out and about six feet back, so.
So it'll come back from, and they don't have to be like right on the edge of the rail.
And it'll extend down over that, so, but there's just a lot when you get down past and like.
Could you identify the location?
I'm sorry, yeah, the bus stop is right at Dixie and Arlington, right on that corner. And, yeah, what I had noticed a, a while back in meetings back, I had brought up because I saw a woman get off the bus and almost fall in a ditch, you know, with her kids. So, uh, we talked about, I asked the state, I asked the bus company, you know, nobody wanted to do anything, and, and Tank said, we'll give you a bench. So, that's why we thought we'd extend it out a little bit and make it safer, so.
I have a question.
That's that, and the gateway, um, we just don't, we don't have all the punch lists done and we still haven't ensured it's held on that, so, um, yes, sir.
I just have a question about the bus stop, um, I know I've been asking for several months when we might see the plans, I know, or would that come with the bids when we get to review those?
Well, we should be getting a plan before it gets bid, um, because that's what he, maybe the approach from him, to make sure his plans are acceptable, so.
Okay.
Then we'll get the sequence for that.
Great.
I'm on the infrastructure committee, uh, Steve's the chairperson of it. We've been down here measuring all this with Jay, it's pretty scary down there.
Yeah.
I mean, them cars fly by, so if we can get that thing backed up, give people a little more room, be a lot safer down there, so.
So as we get plans from Jay, we'll submit everything to council, of course, so, but it's, it needs to be done, something needs to be done.
That was it.
Any financials, Julie? Everybody doing financials, page eight?
Yes, I'll make a motion for a trade.
I'll second.
I did have a, just a one or two questions, Julie, or not even necessarily questions, I guess I just want you to clarify for me. Well, let's see, the page eight of ten, in our road tax fund, we currently have, as of our thirty thirty search, we have a balance of three ninety-four, nine twenty-nine, is that clear? That is correct. Okay. So we've been carrying this thing around that Sarah's asked about a long time on the first page, which is an accounts receivable due from the road tax fund of one eighty-eight. That stems back to a cost overrun on the Lower Jackson project, so I'm, I'm wondering, do we want to trim some of this down? Do we want to take?
It's actually a budgeted payout.
Oh, well, you can say that, okay, great. Okay, when, when do you anticipate doing that?
Well, as soon as all the money's transferred, because she's still getting stuff in, and then once she moves it from the general to the, um.
I think most of it, and that three ninety-four, because I know the last meeting I said that I was going to deposit a little five hundred thousand.
Right, I saw, and I saw here that, um.
Which I can see there, but you want it in October or November? I guess it shows up in your, maybe NASF.
I don't know if it's in here yet.
Yeah, the point is having, um.
What page?
On the last page, there's an expense of a hundred and seven, that would be.
Oh, yeah.
That's all, that includes a hundred and three for the, you know.
Okay, that, that's this payment right here, right, okay. Okay. That's even, okay.
And it is in the budget to pay, it was two, two hundred and six.
And you've been working it down, yeah.
It's down to, yeah, one hundred.
Okay, great.
It'll be paid off.
Okay, that's excellent. And the only other observation I had is that our financials are in excellent condition. The money reserved for the match for Amsterdam is accruing interest for us, so that's good. And, uh, those are my only observations.
And we are starting to get a few reimbursements from next year, so.
Slow.
Sarah has a question.
Yeah, so I didn't want to finish your thought. I just wanted to ask, I have two questions, one is about general fund cash, it looks like we have quite a bit there, I don't know what we need for operation for the next six months to a year, but I wondered if we might be, it would be good to move it to reserve or to invest some of it, um, because it, it seems high to me. And so that's one question, and then, I'm gonna, should we address that first?
Well, yeah, I can, um, we usually wait until all the taxes are in for the property tax, because that's not our only income, you know, all year we get others, but, um, we like to wait until it's in and then see how much is, you know, for operating, and then we want to move, I don't know if it's all moved yet to the road fund or if you've done moving it, Julie?
Not all of it, the majority of it, yeah, these are just late days, inscrivory stuff.
And then the other thing is, is as we're paying on the Amsterdam, when we get a bill for that, we use the general fund right now and not have to put it out of reserves, so I don't want to be short and pull it out of reserves, so I like to keep that money because it's still making like four, four plus, and, you know, that's, I think, I saw the, um, I don't know if it had it in there, but it, uh, we made like seventy-three thousand on, on interest, so in some things until they're like, they come to their CDs or something and then leave it to become, so.
Okay.
But in principle, I'm all for making our money work for us while it's in our possession.
Yeah, so I would just take that pay out of the general fund.
Yeah.
And then when, you know, the money gets bigger and bigger, when big things start happening as we go along, right now it's just all engineering, so then we'll probably have to get in there or something.
I think there's even, you know, a possibility, and maybe this is an infrastrac, uh, financial oversight committee meeting in January or something, we can talk about how we might, you know, even if it's like a short-term investment or something like that, you know.
Yeah, I think anything that should invest in terms of general fund will necessarily be short-term.
Exactly.
And, and the KRS is very, very specific on what we can invest in.
And if we do get some interest on our general fund.
Okay. Second question is just about the line item on page seven of ten, very last line for a hundredth anniversary preparation, and I know we've completed the tuck pointing, so I wondered if that was supposed to be added there, but it was a different line.
Yeah, I.
I didn't get any invoices for anything like that.
You haven't gotten any invoices from my account? Okay.
There you go.
There you go, but it should come out of that line?
Who would that be coming from?
That should be coming from, um, Sal's, yeah, Sapporo, the last one, it's his landscape service, okay.
Didn't we discuss, using some of that money, it wasn't just for the tuck pointing, we were reserving it for other things as well for the.
For events. But yes, and I wanted to mention with respect to our city day, in the past, we paid that out of the park budget, so.
I thought it was a line item, is there, there's a line item for that?
I don't think there's a line item for it, but I was Julie to confirm that, yeah. Boy, I'm really surprised about that.
It's free.
Maybe it's gratitude.
I cut it out there, so.
Especially after the B in.
We have a motion, second on that.
We do have a motion, second.
Okay, Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Cradick?
Yes.
Any committee discussions? Oh, I'm sorry, I just realized I have one report for, uh, Mr. Gray, who didn't make it either, um, they had a meeting and there, nobody disputed this, but we have five twelve St. Joes, seven oh nine St. Joes, and, um, well, the other one's not ours, I gave it to us, but.
It's so small, I couldn't.
Yeah, it's really tiny.
You set the only two on there.
Yeah, uh, so both of those aren't St. Joes, so that means they've been appealed, so then a lien will go on there and, um, for the.
All those, yeah.
Yeah, the property's in pretty, not good shape, so, um, usually fines and liens start to really depress the issue.
Julia, can I, can I just say thank you for sending all those reports? I mean, the, you know, the codes.
All the words, yeah.
You know, I do read those, I figured you probably don't want me to message you every time, like, thank you.
So say hello.
And permits, we haven't had any permits for a while, because they're blank, so.
It was blank today, yeah.
Oh, was it blank? When I last saw me, I was blank, sorry.
Yeah, this is the second blank one I think I've seen.
Any committee discussion?
Hi, Julie. So I'd like to, yes, uh, Mr. Fowler and I met in our park committee meeting, um, the generational swing that we talked about at our last meeting has been installed, thank you to Dan. I have contacted Little Text Commercial to get the weight limitations on that. They say on their website it can hold up to two hundred and fifty pounds, but they don't recommend a steady diet of that, so I want to, you know, get some parameters and we can maybe put a sign there, because, I mean, I've seen some pretty big men get in there with their kids, I just want everybody to be safe and hopefully it will be a popular thing.
And protect our equipment.
Yeah. Also, we removed in the Boulevard a diseased ash tree, it has been removed. I do have photographs, should anybody be interested, I shared them with Jim. The tree was badly damaged by the ash bore and we were advised by an arborist it was no longer safe. Unfortunately, there are three other, uh, purple ash trees down there who all have some degree of disease, but what we decided to do, let's deal with the one that's really in bad shape, we took it out, we dug the soil out, Dan took care of that, we replanted it with a yellowwood, which is a native tree, not afflicted by the ash bore, and we'll just deal with these one at a time. We did treat these trees, by the way, just in case, sometimes the treatment is not adequate to overcome the infestation, so, um, the yellowwood is in, it's a slow growing, but native tree, it has a lovely white spring bloom and, uh, I think you'll, I think you'll like it. Um, we also talked about the removal of the, you know, the tuck pointings done in those stone walls, Dan removed the old yew bushes that were there, and he also just finished removing the root system for those, which is massive, and we'll now go back in and we're going to plant a holly on the other side, it's going to be simple and clean, and then we have to plant the male holly, will go out in the Boulevard, but it, it should make for, uh, an attractive winter interest and a nice, clean evergreen shrub that does not have to be trimmed, it holds its pyramidal shape allegedly.
Will there be an area for, for flowers in that?
Well, I didn't want, I wanted to, there will be an area, but we were just going to like keep it in mulch and kind of keep it clean and simple, but we'll look at it when it's done and if people think we need more, we'll do more. The tulips, by God's grace, got planted before this weather hits, so hopefully, uh, that's the worst job in the garden, the absolute worst job in the garden, and it is completed. Laura and I kind of picked the tulips, we picked one called Torch Song, and it should be really happy and vibrant and hopefully make our spring really joyful. Then Jim and I discussed, as we do at every meeting, our ongoing care of Audubon Preserve. Jim, do you want to talk about that?
Really haven't done anything since March, so.
So we're always trying to get rid of honeysuckle. We're always trying to replace the honeysuckle with native plants, because if you just leave an empty space, you're going to get honeysuckle back, so. This, uh, spring in March, we planted, what, fifty, um, which hazels? I think it was fifty.
After we cleared out.
After we cleared out honeysuckle, do you call those saplings or seedlings? They're small. I don't think they rise to the level of a sapling, but, uh, Dr. Doherty gets them from the Kentucky Arbor Division and we pay a small amount, they really work well for Audubon Preserve, because it's really hard to get stuff down there and they're, they're small and they're light. So we talked about going in with some understory things, we're going to request red buds, we'll see if we're able to get those, pawpaws, and maybe silky dogwoods, so that, that's our ask to the state, we'll see what we end up getting. Also of note, we've been replacing the rotted community garden beds with a, a metal bed, so there's, I think, only two left that need to be replaced.
I noticed that, I noticed one.
Okay, so any questions? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just, I don't know who to ask this to, so if I'm, I'm sorry, but when I was driving here today on Amsterdam, I'm sure you all have seen that giant wasp's nest right by Trolley Park.
Oh, I, I actually have detail on this.
Okay, I was like, wow, that's crazy.
Okay, so there's actually, there's actually three of them.
Oh, goodness.
Okay, and it's a paper wasp's nest, and they're dead now, so there's nothing in that nest, there's no activity, but, uh, Dan is, I think, going to try and take down the nest so people aren't scared of it, and the, and the two other ones. And Dan, I, I hear those nests are actually valuable, if you get it down, you can sell it somehow.
I think he's gone.
Oh, is Dan gone? Oh, well, maybe he'll turn it into us, we'll auction it at the city, but, um.
They won't re-inhabit it?
They will not re-inhabit it, no, the queen is the only one left alive and she crawls into some wall somewhere, probably one of our stone walls, tries to stay alive, but the other inhabitants are gone. But I did get a lot of texts from moms who were down there and they're scared of it, so.
It was huge, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, Dan is going to take it down so people won't be scared of it.
Good, good.
Oh, maybe Julie will get the nest.
Julie, I had one in one of my trees. Are you going to do?
I know Beau will.
Next year, if I see.
Oh, there you go, there's three.
He loves stuff like that.
But the biggest one is hanging over Amsterdam, and you don't really see them until the leaves start to fall and then they're like, ooh, that doesn't look good.
Yeah, we were up in the park and then I was like, ooh.
Yeah. Yes, Sarah.
I was going to ask about the wasps too, but I have a question also about the, the new fountain and benches that are in the middle of Park Drive, I don't, I don't think we've talked about this, um, on council, but it, you know, I've definitely walked.
Well, the fountain's not new, it's been there like twenty-seven years.
It has?
Yeah. Yeah, I think twenty, I think twenty-two years.
The benches were donated, um.
Well, the, the bench, there is a new bench there, all the benches that are in the center of the Boulevard have all been donated over time. The new bench is donated all donor money, no city money involved, and it is, uh, in memory of little Emma Hockey, who unfortunately, um, had a tragic, uh, death on September seventh of last year, so, um, and that bench that is there, and it is all with donated funds, is made in America, it is a copy of the World's Fair nineteen oh nine, I want to say, bench, Covington uses this bench, and I thought they were so nice, it's an eight-seater bench, Covington uses this bench, and I thought they were so nice, it's an eight-seater bench, so it can accommodate a lot of people. The other two benches that are out there, they came in at the same time as the fountain, so they're like 22 years old.
But the paving is new, right?
The paving is new, the, and that's all donated, yeah. The pavers to, really, it allows you to secure that new bench and kind of bolt it down so it's not up for the taking.
Time will, well, yeah.
Well, it holds at level two, but that, that was part of the parameters that came with the bench on how you install it. You'll note these benches, they have, I think Covington has three of them installed along the walkway up into Voo, and they've mounted them, in their case, on concrete slabs, but they're really nice benches, they're, they're real wood, they're, they're real cast iron, and I think it's a nice look for the park, and I'm very grateful to all the people who donated it, particularly to, I want to give a shout out to Drew Ellison, who really spearheaded it, and I hope that everybody, I hope it's a space everybody will enjoy.
That's, to me, that's awesome, something we should celebrate, and I feel like those are kinds of things we should take pictures of, we should put on our Facebook page and share. I don't, I rarely am on Park Drive, but I love that story, and I think that's a great story to share about our city, so I think that would be something we could share, so people are aware.
I think that would be nice to do.
You've gone through Trolley Park and saved little memorial stones and trees, and they would, yeah, ask to put some of that out when they've lost a loved one.
A loved one.
Yeah.
Not that they've lost somebody, but it's nice to say.
Any other committees?
Yeah, Economic Development and Business Committee, we are hosting a end-of-year social on November 19, so everyone is invited, it's at Finkie's Pub at 6:30, November 19, put it on your calendar. Thanks to Noah, who is here tonight, and, and also Laura, two of them, mostly Noah.
Mostly Noah, yes.
You know, made the rounds to all of our businesses to invite everyone and share a flyer, and we'll be presenting an award to the longest-standing business in Park Hills, I won't tell you who it is, because that's part of the surprise, but it'll be a fun night, hopefully, last year, when we had the sort of inaugural version of this event, it snowed, so hopefully we've gotten that out of the way.
It was like this, it was like a random, where did all this snow come from?
Anywhere on the food truck?
I don't think we're going to have a food truck, but we may have some other food, and obviously they'll have refreshments there. So, it's a good way to support a neighborhood business and come hang out together and...
And get to know our businesses.
And hopefully...
It was nice last year, yeah, we had a good time.
It was fun, even in the snow.
Even in the snow, yeah.
Yeah, so please come.
I have a short report on finance. The mayor and I met today with US Bank regarding the Fit Creighton Fund, and this is a regular meeting, sometimes we do it annually, if there's a lot of activity in the market or the account, we might even do it quarterly, but this was our first meeting with them since July, so, yeah, it's been a while. The Creighton Fund is a very important trust fund for the benefit of our volunteer fire department. The account is in good order, we receive from the account only the income, none of the corpus, so how the monies are invested and how that income is accrued is important to us, and it's very important for us to stay on top of this, so that in the budgeting process, we know what's available for our volunteer firemen from the Creighton Fund, and we know that the monies are being invested in such a way as to produce the best for them. So, it looks like this year, the fund has done very well. An interesting little aspect of this is, when this trust was set up, it's not a not-for-profit trust, so they cannot accrue capital gains in here without sustaining really punitive taxes, so, kind of ironically, for Scott Rigney's benefit, when they do do that, it's kind of a win, because they got to distribute it to us. This year, it looks like we will be getting maybe a little more than $40,000 from this fund for the volunteer fire department. The 40 is certain, based on the capital gains that we see in the account, we think we'll probably get an additional $5,000 to $7,000, so we'll see. I did make a request of the US Bank officials today, that they calculate for us how much money has been distributed to the city of Park Hills for the benefit of the fire department since its inception, which was 2001, and I will present to you all on that, hopefully, she said it probably won't be December, it'll probably be January, but I want to present it, because this woman, Ruth Creighton, this was a great gift to our city, I mean, this is an important gift, and I think we should be grateful for it, so I just want to put out there what it benefited us.
She did have heirs, and...
Yeah, it's another thing to, like, celebrate, highlight, and people might not know that story.
Right, and I mean, she lived modestly, and Scott, when we get to that point, I've asked Julie to, you know, give us some info, and I'm sure you can give us some info, why, why you were chosen as her beneficiary, so I'd really appreciate it if you could give me that, and it'll probably be January, you know, she said she had a lot of year-end duties, but it'll, you'll be surprised, it's a very substantial amount of money that has come to our...
Might be something to incorporate in our, on our anniversary.
I think, I think it would be great, yeah.
How do the funds benefit the volunteer fire department?
We receive the, basically, it, it turns out to be about 5% of the corpus is distributed to us, and the chief uses those funds for various purposes. Chief, you want to address that, how you actually employ those funds, like this year, what have you done with them?
Well, the new stat car that I mentioned, that was purchased by the Creighton Fund, our pickup truck was purchased by the Creighton Fund, no city, no city money whatsoever. So, those are the types of things above and beyond what we would get in our budget.
And the budget supplies out of it all year long, you know, like an average of $20, but anytime we go over that, we take down.
And the chief has to do a lot of certifying and steps that are involved, that he does an excellent job of taking care of, to maintain that. The default beneficiary is St. Mary Cemetery, so we want to keep doing a good job and enjoy the benefits of the trust.
What do you mean by default?
Well, if we cease to, if we cease to have a volunteer fire department...
Oh, okay.
There's an alternative, correct.
Gotcha.
And, you know, realistically, you know, years ago, there was a lot of volunteers, right, Scott? And it's kind of drivel, because with today's age, everybody's, both spouses are working, so it's really, I mean, if you look, look at the news and see how many small cities are losing their police department and a fire department, so that was a gift that she gave to the city without an announcement.
Big time.
Yeah. One last thing, and it, it may not be appropriate here, so just stop me if it, if it is not. I feel like we've shared a lot of really good and interesting stories tonight in talking about the 100-year anniversary, I just want to put it out there, I'd love to, should we put together a committee for that, do we need to, like, reinstate a comms committee? I think we need to start compiling all of this stuff, so we have it ready to deploy as we lead up to that, so we can generate some excitement about the anniversary, making some videos about these stories, because like, I don't, I haven't lived here very long, I don't know a lot of those things, but I think that's part of what makes it very special, so I don't know if that's appropriate now, but just food for thought.
Well, you know, Emily, I think it is appropriate. Several years back, I can't even tell you how many years, it might be as many as 10 years, I hired a videographer, he's self-employed, his name is Toly Glassmeyer, maybe some people in the audience are familiar with him, but he has a passion for history, and he did two videos for us, one on the Trolley Lines, and one on Dee Collins Lee's home, which is now Dr. Sugarman's home, and I think we keep those on our website, don't we, Julie? If not, I'll send you one.
Like, yeah, but you know what I'm saying, like, whenever...
But I'd like to talk to him, I mean, they were very cheap to do, maybe we could do a few more of those, too.
And I bet they're probably even cheaper now with, like, how technology is...
Well, I think they're really a nice thing to have in your library of resources for residents.
And people, I mean, I just feel like that's how people digest information anymore, and I think also that would be an opportunity, and again, because I work in higher ed, so my mind goes here immediately, I think this could be a really unique kind of work-based learning opportunity for, like, a public admin student at NKU, or a student at Gateway that's maybe going through, like, marketing or something like that, so something to also consider.
That's a good idea.
To help us with social media, too. Yes, absolutely.
And I'd like to report, it's not open, or out there yet, but our, it's being updated for some time now, our website, so it'll be much more friendly, we took stuff from Wakefield Mitchell's, when you get it on your phone, you have big buttons, and you can just go somewhere, and then I, there was another one that was discussed in Campbell County, where you hover over the how-to, and it kind of tells you what to do, so much more friendly, I just, I think it's about done, so it's almost there.
I love that, and also, again, if not appropriate, just thinking, like, is there a way that we, we're talking about, like, the rules and people understanding, like, how to, like, sign up for things, or like, what time things need to be submitted, et cetera, is there, like, an AI component that we could add to that, where we could have, like, a Park Hills agent that could help support, like, community communications, so they don't have to research all of these things?
I don't know, the website might help, it, it'll have something where, you know, they can put in their suggestions, stuff like that, to Julie, you know, go to our email, I think we've got a couple of spots that are going to be more friendly and easier to find to do some of that.
You were talking about, like, an AI search? Like, like an agent that, like, you could, you know, like, when you get on any website and it's like...
Chat now!
And it pops up, and this thing helps you navigate, I mean, we're just, you know, we're in the industrial, industrial revolution of our time with AI, so...
Government has some kind of rules, though, because that's what I'm told, that there has to be particular things done, that has to be certain.
Take someone with personality, I think, but everything's a lot of it, my dad always called me a basketball player, to chat with, you know what I mean? It just takes away, when I hit on a bank or something, it's like, Chad, I'm like, I keep this out of my face, I don't care.
I agree, I, I, and I...
And I understand.
I don't want to take any, your point, too, but it takes away this.
Well, and I do know how many people just walk into our office still and pay tax, so it's, it's still that, even though, you know, they might have a mortgage in it, they still walk their taxes into our office.
I do.
I mean, a lot, a lot, a lot of people, so.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of, you know, people need options, I think younger people are probably, aren't going to call you, Julie, sorry, but I think that's just the way things are today, you know, they don't want to, they don't want to, if you don't text somebody before you call.
Right.
I need a warning.
That is so true.
I also want to, if I can, just change the subject to back to 100th Anniversary for a second, and I just thought of this, I know some time ago, we were talking about the bronze signs and the sign in Trolley Park, you know, I think...
We should revisit that.
We need to revisit that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we have funds for that still, I believe.
We do.
And, you know, I'd be happy to, I don't, again, this could be a good reason to have that committee, because...
Well, why don't we talk about that at the next meeting? I know that I, I really think that our 100th anniversary should be a special and unifying thing, I know I've talked to a lot of people who would like to be involved in this, who are longtime residents, and one of them, Julie Rowcamp, I shouldn't throw her name out publicly, but she said she would like to...
She's on it now.
She's out here now, she would like to be in charge of a house tour, I think that'd be a great thing, and it would be a really nice idea to...
That was fun.
Yeah, I think it is fun, and, and, yeah, and I want to include houses, there's a house on St. Joe, I think it's a really important house that needs to be, you know, we need to go through all that, that's a lot, we'll do it.
Yeah, I think that'd be a fun thing to do.
Those are all good things, and we can move, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't know we was on new business.
Well, I was just...
That was my fault, I took a second.
Old business and then new business, that's old business, we're better than new business.
I, I do have new business.
I've got a new business, you go first.
Okay, all right, I'm pretty excited about this new business, so I'm going to ask council and the mayor to consider supporting this. I would like Park Hills to become a Purple Heart City. That's a designation given to a city to formally thank and honor the veterans from that community who have been wounded or killed in action. It signifies the city's official commitment to recognizing and supporting Purple Heart recipients. The municipality, often with the help of local veterans groups, just passes a proclamation to officially become a Purple Heart City. Typically, these actions include, like, something we might do at our Memorial Day Parade, where we would announce this. I think everybody here knows what the Purple Heart is, but it was originally created by General George Washington in 1782, it's awarded to members of the armed forces wounded or killed in combat.
I did see a sign in Bellevue.
I was going to read you, there are...
So, I didn't know that's what it was.
In the nation, there are over 1,000 Purple Heart cities, and in Kentucky, there are over 48, the closest ones are like Alexandria, Bellevue, Elsmer, Florence, Warsaw, you know, but there's, there's really little to no cost. Usually, the department, the actual military department, Purple Heart Department, will provide us with some signs, but we may want to have different signage, I can pass this or, I'll tell you what, I'll email it to all of council, but it's an attractive sign that just references our respect for our veterans. My husband's a veteran, and he is a Purple Heart veteran, and I've spent a lot of time with these men, I spend a lot of time at Veterans Hospital, they have given so much to our country, and it would be a pretty simple thing for us to do, and I think it's distinguishing for us as a city, too, it's a good thing.
I agree.
I just got one thing, it's been a long meeting for a while, I really appreciate everybody coming up here tonight, I apologize for my crummy voice, I'm a little bit under the weather, but pampering up something good about email, I got to get something off my chest tonight, I was approached by somebody that said, I don't respond to emails, and I want to tell everybody why I don't respond to emails, I look at all the emails that I get from the city, and I read them, but my personal opinion, this is just me, I got to be very careful if I send out an email to somebody, because if I say, somebody emails me something that maybe I really can't answer, I, I kind of think they, I've always said this, and I'm going to be able to say now, come up to the meeting and voice your opinion, what you got an issue with, because if I can't answer, then the mayor, or the chief, or fire chief, or somebody answers, it's a lot more smarter than I on that issue. If somebody emails me something about a traffic problem or something like that, I'll bring it up at a meeting that I got an email under this issue. You know, if I say something that maybe somebody don't agree with, and then I, I don't want to be negative tonight, then it goes into a Facebook page, and I'm hiding the Facebook and all that stuff, and they, sometimes, I don't think they've been able to do it, but I twist it around, so I don't send emails out, and then, if there's an open records act that people can do, it costs the city and, and council a lot of money and a lot of time, so if you send me an email, I'm going to read it, and if it's an issue, I can bring up at the city meeting, I will bring it up, I just, I just wanted to put that, and I apologize for making the meeting go longer, but I wanted to get that out tonight, that, that's it for me.
Any other moves up? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, I'd like to move that we go...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'd like to move that we go into executive session. To discuss a possible, you want me to say it?
Yeah, you have to.
Okay, litigation, possible litigation.
Okay.
I'll second that. Is that proper without our attorney here?
Ooh, that's a good question.
Well, you can't, just, just so everybody in the audience knows, executive session is something you do for, it's specified in the KRS for specific things, and litigation is one of those things, because you can't talk about that in public for obvious reasons. No action can be taken in executive session, it's just conversation, there's no votes, there's no action.
And what's, instead, an executive session stays an executive session.
Exactly, it stays there, I, I, I don't think there's a problem, and if...
Steve's not here, and the attorney's not here, so I don't know, but it's...
Can we, can we call an executive session at caucus? Is that possible?
Sure.
I mean, well, the attorney, it depends on, do we need to have the attorney present?
I don't think you do, but if the mayor is more comfortable with that, I'm, I'm not trying to interfere with anything here, but I think it is appropriate to discuss that... that litigation, and...
I agree.
I agree with that.
Whenever you want to do it, mayor, it's your call.
I mean, I think it's our call. Yeah, maybe so.
Okay, Greg Clayton?
Well, I'm going back and forth, I mean, with the attorney not here, are we doing the right thing, and I'm not trying to get out there and get involved.
We're not making any decisions, we're just discussing.
Right, well, I'm good with it, that's fine. Yes, sorry.
No, no, no.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Smollett?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
And those of you who want to leave, there's no decisions afterwards, so we'll just be...
Be well.